Yeah.
You might be able to do it.
Yeah.
Oh, we told somebody to leave the garbage can.
Destroy it so you can do it.
Anyone sees a caller there, they're behind the goal.
Yeah, that's one of its just on seal. We want the seals gone.
Leper seal?
I don't want it to become an industry.
My my sense of appreciation is why you can't visit all.
Yeah, no kidding.
Did he really? Uh, and why is it really like he said, they would? They like.
He's not.
So can you give me back? I have sorry, I guess it's like where. There's there's the. Those are the interesting. You're. Don't worry. I only got. Yeah.
Is that what she tells him?
Some of those people go alive. Yes. You know, you know, who's.
Hey Joe, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, good.
Loud and clear, five by five.
Just got here in time.
There's a club. They they find you need.
They're they're about three or four. I didn't have my name on it. After.
It's like never.
There's a. I'll chase your bags.
All the ambulance for.
If I were right, so we missed the the week before.
This meeting is being recorded.
The patient killed one of them. We won't talk to her. She can give them a phone.
Have we done a sound check with Ed and Joe?
Joe, I haven't heard it. I'm clear. I'm clear.
Okay. Joe, you still there?
Still here.
All right. At seven thirty, you probably need to order.
By the way, this is in my. By the state of America. And to the republic. Sands. On the nation. We got. In this world.
Rhino. That.
There.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Nimitz.
Here.
No, for me. Okay, we have a quorum, we have a meeting, we also have two of the trustees attending remotely, uh, which is once again authorized by the gubernatorial proclamation, which expires the ninth of of December. So today is the fifth, it's uh still qualifies. It does mean that all votes will be by roll call from the beginning through the end, as we have two attending remotely this evening. Uh, other than that, we're back to the minutes. The approval of the minutes of November twenty first, two thousand twenty two.
So moved yet.
Second. Moved by the at least seconded by Thorn to approve the minutes of November twenty first, two thousand twenty two. Any corrections? There being none. Roll call, please. Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
By affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes, thank you all.
President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the police business both items up to this present time.
Second, Nemic.
Moved by the at least seconded by Nemic to amend the agenda and move the items under the police and public safety report up to the current time. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
I refer to votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes, the agenda is so amended.
I'd also like to make a motion that we extend a part-time police officer position to Kyle Davis at a rate of twenty four dollars an hour.
Second. Arnie.
Moved by the at least seconded by Thorn to uh. Say, okay, appoint as a part-time officer in the village of Sleepy Hollow, Kyle Davis at a rate of twenty four dollars per hour. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
I refer my votes and no negative votes, the motion so passes. Mr. Davis. After the order.
Please.
You get to read that and I get to stumble through it myself, and any mistakes, it's by me, not you. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kyle Davis.
Having been duly hired to the position of part-time patrol officer.
Having been duly hired to the position of part-time patrol officer.
In the village of Sleepy Hollow, King County, Illinois.
In the village of Sleepy Hollow, King County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois and the ordinance of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of part of the of the position of part-time patrol officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of patrol officer to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations to what an advantage we did.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Yeah, we moved to my model, so we got uh. Well, I went down to number two where you can move the uh, so the departmental uh, mentioned.
Yes, I'm sorry, guy. I'd like to bring that officer, Arias Garcia. It's. It's a proud moment when a chief has to recognize, you know, when officers do work every day, but sometimes they do things that are kind of exceptional. On November nineteenth, twenty twenty two, approximately twelve fifty-five P M, Officer Fidel, Arias Garcia was dispatched to a suicidal subject in the nine hundred block of Wilkes-Straw. Calling about a female experiencing a mental health issue who was in process of harming herself. Officer Arias Garcia arrived and located a blind subject in the bathroom using a piece of fiberglass and sliced him from arms. Officer Arias removed the glass from her hand and then physically restrained the subject to prevent her from further harm. He then waited until the fire department arrived to evaluate and treat her wound. Officer Garcia's quick and decisive actions prevented the subject from further harming herself and allowed her to be transported to the hospital for treatment. In doing so, he upheld the highest standards of support. Cast the positive light on our profession and our organization. Congratulations, John Ward.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Well done.
Appreciate, thank you. Okay, back to the published agenda. Uh. We've gone through the gubernatorial announcement, the next one. It's that time again, which the contract we have with the union police officers uh comes up for renewal. So we are going to appoint our negotiating team for the board this evening and representing the board and the negotiating team, I'm suggesting we appoint Mr. Dattley and Mr. Nimitz. Mr. Dattley, of course, is the trustee that does the liaison with the police department. Mr. Nimitz has served in this capacity the last two times of the year. Uh, so he's had some experience with uh this situation. Uh, the rest of the team will be uh, Mr. Schuster. So those four will make up the negotiating team for the village. And I said, that's both the part-time and the full-time contracts, which come up for uh, well, renewal as the first of many. So the next five months. So we've got uh our work to be uh to do, and these two gentlemen uh with your permission are appointed to the uh team. If I could have a motion to uh note the appointment of Mr. Dattley and Mr. Nimitz to the negotiating team.
So moved.
Second, Ernie.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Hardy to approve the appointment of Mr. Dattley and Mr. Nimitz to the negotiating team on behalf of the board. Uh, any other comments, questions, or discussion? If not, sorry, roll call. They get the vote for themselves. They get the vote. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
I refer my votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Uh, okay, the next item we've got on the agenda is the holiday hours for the village hall office. Uh, historically, we have taken Christmas Day, which will be on Sunday, so that would be meaning that the following day, Monday, the twenty-sixth, will be our village uh office uh holiday or holiday hours, and we would be closed. Uh. Christmas Eve is Saturday. We don't typically take Christmas Eve off, so that one we will just leave as is. However, we move forward, we've got uh. Move to end of the first. So the office hours on that uh will be closed on Monday, January second. So. Uh, we need to put those in a motion.
I I should we sound that that way?
Yeah. Yep, okay. So we have a motion to approve the holiday hours.
Nemic so moved.
Second, Thorn.
Moved by Nemic, seconded by Thorn to approve the holiday office hours, that being Monday, December twenty-sixth and January second, two thousand twenty-three, being days that will be closed for the holidays. Okay, any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none. Roll call, please. Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
God.
Aye.
I refer my votes, no negative votes, the ordinance are the motion so passes. Thank you all. Okay, the next item, review and discussion of the draft petition for amending the zoning ordinance. I think I've uh mentioned this a couple of times in the past, we're getting closer. Uh, in your packets, there were draft petitions uh for the redoing of uh the zoning ordinance for on what we typically refer to now as the Gaul property, which is the Verlo mattress area, just north of seventy-two. Uh, the family that owns it's last name is Gaul, so that's and the name we've been utilizing on that. Uh, there is some history on this. The village forcibly annexed that section inside our boundaries some thirty-five years ago. It had previously been in the county as a business district. When the village of Sleepy Hollow annexed it in, we classified it as residential, R one. Now, ever since it has been brought into the village, it has been non-conforming. They've not, they've had three houses over there, but the majority of the property was used for another purpose. What we're trying to do now is get this thing squared away so that we got it zoned properly for a business use. Right now, there are four parcels over. And what we're proposing is to basically put them into one zoning classification that will cover all four parts. Okay. Landing and zoning has been on some issues for um uh, we're getting some feedback from somebody, some scratching.
I have a good mic, wow, sorry.
Well, it sounded like the lights were coming.
I was just.
Okay, appreciate it. Uh. So that's what you've got in your packets this evening is the draft ordinances. What I hope to do is, after the first of the year, set a meeting date for a public hearing to have A and Z go through this in a public hearing and then bring their recommendations back to the board. Some of those uh ideas are in these drafts that you see in front of you. Uh, they're not totally exclusive, and I do understand there's been some question about the term distribution center and warehousing. Uh, those terms seem to strike fear in the neighborhood at the moment. Uh, it is not our intention to allow a trucking firm to make that a truck farm up there. Uh, it's uh, I believe P and Z was looking at something smaller when they said distribution and warehousing as opposed to a thirty-five bay semi uh operation. Uh, we've got to realize that we've only got what, a little over five acres of land up there?
Right.
So it's not, I know I somewhere down the line, someone said we had thirty-five acres if we were dealing with, that's not true. Uh, the Gaul property is only five acres. So I mean, uh, to get a big truck farm in there is not going to be possible. But I think that the P and Z was looking at is some local vendor running local distribution out of that place and Amazon running a a fleet through there. Uh, but however, that's a question, once again, it can be brought up at the public hearing. We decided to keep that in the draft. I don't know what other terminology we would use.
Yeah. Uh, you know, there's something in the existing regulations that use that terminology as.
Okay.
Uh, so that's why we, you know, take a look at that.
Mr. President, there's a, under this one section here, it says freestanding would allow for includes requests for the following special uses, and it has freestanding parking area for storage of trucks slash semi-trailers pursuant to, you know.
Right.
Eight and five eight to dash five thirteen, so it would allow for the storage of.
Very similar to what we read with Randy's Market and what's going on over there now. I mean, it's some storage of vehicles over there. But what we're talking about is not that distribution center where there's thirty-five truck bays.
Right, but you could.
You can still store.
Semi.
Semi.
Are there homes behind there?
There are three houses back there.
But I mean, even further back, is there any?
There is back on the other side of Tartan Glen. There are residents of West Dundee that back to that property.
Because that's what some residents would probably have objection to with uh, if they start them up at six o'clock, five-thirty in the morning, they do that over in East Dundee, back where that old milk thing used to be, and I know the residents back there have raised hell for, you know, ten years about that because they all start at five in the morning and between five and six-thirty, they're all fillering out.
We have no residents over there.
Okay.
Yeah, West Dundee residents want to uh come and complain to us about it. They're more than welcome to, but it is not our intention to put a, you know, a distribution center of that type over there.
Okay.
Uh. And we would probably go with the same type of idea that that would be screened from the neighboring residents. And we could go through and say, you know, no start time prior to six A M. So this is a draft that um we've got circulating for you guys to take a look at and think about.
That's the only thing I saw, and everything else looked good, but I saw that earlier today.
Any questions on the news?
A quick question about buffer. Are there, are there any resident vacant property over there? I noticed we're going to reduce the Buffett uh by one half.
That's one of the proposals, uh, we have no residential establishments over there other than the three current houses that are on that property, which are non-conforming.
It's vacant to the east and it's vacant land to the west at this time. The 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 one-half buffer, that's in the village code now. That's not new or particular to this idea.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, that will be returning. Uh, the next item I've got is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. Ordinance amending the alcohol liquor regulations for sales and packaging of outpackaged goods within the village. If you recall, the owners of the strip mall along seventy-two on the south side come to us about the putting in a liquor store, a packaged liquor store. We reviewed it, we looked at it, one of the unique things that these gentlemen would like to have is a tasting bar. And the state law does allow them to have a tasting uh program. But the state law stays quiet onto the hours of operations of that, leaving it strictly to this board. So we can set the hours on that segment of the testing or the tasting. So for example, if he wants to be open from ten in the morning till midnight, do we want him to have tastings from ten A M to midnight? Or do we want to say tastings can be from one o'clock to five o'clock? The main thing is, we don't want him to run a bar.
Right.
Inside and telling us it's a taste system. If we leave him tasting the whole time he's open, I'm afraid that's what we're going to see. You know, people will get three or four buddies together and go down, hey, you get three beers, I get three beers, you get three beers, we're here for, you know, the game.
Well, more particularly, it could be hard liquor.
It could be hard.
Not just.
Not just. Joe? I'm sorry, I thought I.
No, what are they proposing? Do they put in a wish?
They have not. Okay. Youngness on a wish list.
Uh, but not in particular as to that, uh, just. They just say that there would be sampling available in the, in, they haven't uh suggested that it would have different hours or be limited to different hours.
That's something that I think we need to do is put some hours on this thing. And for one, I, the police could drive by there and if guys are in there drinking at nine o'clock at night, he says, I just tasted. What do we do? Uh, that's why, yeah, we can give them some guidelines. Eleven A M to five P U. Gives them a six-hour window. But we would know that, you know, after five P M, there's no serving in that building.
They have a, they have a facility up in Crystal Lake, is it?
Yes.
I mean.
Well, they don't.
I don't think they.
They have a, they, well, let's see, they have a retail uh establishment up there uh for rent, I don't know whether it's a strip mall or what. They themselves do not have a liquor store at this point.
But they don't?
No. They're, they're modeling their idea off of.
That's it.
Christian.
They suggest that that's a night, that's the type of establishment they would like to run, similar to that.
Anybody know what they do in Crystal Lake, though? Is it all day long or is it just specific hours?
I couldn't find uh anything in their regulations. And I had uh Crystal Lake Regulations that addresses that. And I didn't get a copy of the particular license of that establishment to determine. There are limitations in the state laws to how many samples you can have.
Yeah, I thought that worked.
If it's, if it's honored, and I'm not see, I'm not suggesting it won't be, but I'm just saying from an enforcement standpoint, who's to say that George has done, he had his three or he's on his sixth, you know?
Well, I know with tastings, though, and even in uh in breweries, I mean, you get a brewery, I mean, they'll give you one tasting, maybe two, and that's it, you shut off, and it's so small.
Right.
But uh, yeah, I guess the one thing is, I don't think we want to inhibit their opportunity for sales and revenue.
Right.
You know, by saying all of a sudden, we're going to do it from eleven to five. I'd say give them a chance first, I mean, they're coming in with a business proposal, let them see, and then you can go from there before we put the car, you know, before the horse. Uh, just say, okay, and once they do it, they come in and say, oh, we want to do it all day, and we'll say, well, how about if you do it then from noon to seven o'clock or something like that, but I don't think it's going to be a place where they're going to go in and have beers. I mean, I think you could limit that maybe or restrict that. It says packaged goods only sold over the counter, but I, when he was here that night, I remember him talking about uh, like high-end liquors.
Right.
Like very high-end liquors, maybe hard liquors and stuff like that, and believe me, if you're buying wine, you're not going to uh give a lot of tastings of a good bottle of wine, plus over a couple of days, it's going to go bad. So I would say leave them, I, let, at least leave them the opportunity to come in and say, hey, this is what we want, then you can always dispel it and say, no, we're going to give you this. Instead of just saying it right now and saying we want to do it from, you know, noon to five or noon to six.
I did ask them for an outline of their plan, and all, all they sent to me was that uh, samplings would be done uh every day, perhaps. Uh, they would want that at least every day, uh, their employees would manage that on site, there might be um distributor uh events where, you know, I I would bring in my product and and allow sample.
Like Benny's does all the time.
And, yeah, exactly. Uh, I'm, I'm trying to look up the state law, there are limits when they do that under state laws to how many ounces and how many.
Right, yes.
Just, you know, as you would see in a, in a winery, for example, they give you, you know, three samples.
Yeah.
Of so many ounces and.
Could we send him a defined?
So that applies, uh, what the president is suggesting is instead of their entire hours of operation, eight AM to eleven PM, uh, weekdays and then, uh, twelve midnight on Friday and Saturday, if you wanted to draw that back a little bit, maybe not allow it in the mornings, maybe not allow it all night. Uh, uh, that's something to consider.
Yeah, give them, give them a level that defines our, what, what we're asking, saying, you know, we wanna, this is, this is what we like from you. We want a defined outline of when your tastings are gonna be, what type of tastings are gonna be.
I, I mean, I tried to get that, but they didn't address.
I would just give a deadline on it, saying either do it or, or next meeting, we're gonna do it for you.
All right, yeah, we could also do, uh, for the chief members, uh, compliance checks on them as well. Well, I.
Rating times and days and, and to make sure.
In lease and, uh, yeah, uh, there's sometimes a county.
Right.
Leads that way. There, there's definitely gonna be those checks. But otherwise, there's not, uh, there, there's not a opposition to this type of license, I think it. But no, the only issue is, is would there be some limitations or restrictions put on the sampling?
Yeah, we don't want people staggering out of the place.
Yeah. You know, I, I, yeah, I spoke with Mr. Patel today and invited him to the meeting, even if I zoomed in. Uh, we can do that.
Give me deadline and then.
No, that's.
Yeah, we'll make it, we'll make it.
Particularly, you know, well, he expressed to me, he's very anxious to get this so that he can follow up with the state, the interstate gaming license. So he's very anxious for the village to commit or not, so he knows what, what, where he's at.
But what George, or George is saying here, we could approve this addition to our ordinances. I'm not issued any permit. Any license, any license.
Yeah.
But we've got it on the books. It doesn't have any restrictions in.
Any ordinances?
Why we issue the license, right?
Well, it should be in the ordinance that you have authority to restrict that or not. If that's, if that's the way you're thinking going. And it, and that's why the ordinance in the package has a, some blanks about limiting product sampling. If, if you wanted to approve this, you could say product sampling may be limited by the liquor commissioner. We could pass that.
Maybe limited by the liquor or the village.
Well, liquor commissioner has to answer.
That is.
Now that is, okay, the year.
Yeah. I support, I support that idea just to get it done.
Yeah, so do I. It is the local liquor commissioner. So if you wanted to authorize him to limit, put some limitations in the license, uh, you could do that in this ordinance by mending it on its face and then voting on it tonight. If, if, or you could have it come back next.
Do we, do we have a, do we have a motion on the floor or not?
Not yet.
I, I will go ahead and we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen with the appropriate verbiage there. And Mark, what was the verbiage again to have the liquor commission approve, the hours maybe of?
Product sampling may be limited by the local liquor commission.
That's what I say. That's the motion.
Second, Harney. Mo Bynamik, second in by Harney to approve ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. Mending the liquor licensing to allow for package sales along with product sampling. Creating a class B one. Any further comments, questions or discussion? Or being none? Roll call please. Mr. Dadley.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Nay.
Mr. Nivik.
Hi.
One, two, three, four. Ordinance and the motion so passed, four and one. Okay. That's it for ordinance twenty-two dash one or thirteen. Where we move to the court's report. Oh, I have no reporting. Thank you, Tony. Planning and zoning, Mr. Detmer. Attorney.
I have no report, Mr. President.
Engineering, Mr. Steele.
Uh, just to give you an update, the street room's done, completed. Uh, there's just some cleanup that we have to do, um, uh, we're aware that the road search and signage that there's some out there still, uh, gonna get contracted out there to pick them up or Kyle gets the brand sense. Kinda looks good.
Those are good.
It needed.
Okay, that's it?
That is it.
All right. I noticed, uh, they didn't use the recycled asphalt on the shoulders this year.
No, uh, we're gonna try kind of like the, uh, just the regular version, aggregate better, better compaction.
All right, fair enough. Okay, no questions for Mr. Steele. Thank you, Joe. Uh, Director of Finance, Mr. Van.
Request motion for the approval of the warrants in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Okay. True.
Second, Deatley.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Deatley to approve the warrants of December fifth, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of a hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Second, Harney.
No, no, it's already been, so, uh, moved to second.
Okay.
I'm just calling it out. Any additions, deletions? Comments, questions? If not, roll call please. Mr. Dadley.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Nivik.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so passed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Requesting motion for the approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen for the tax levy in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. It is, um, just under eighty-five percent increase for a last approved tax levy.
All permit.
Tax levy ordinance twenty twenty-two fourteen.
Second, Deatley.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Deatley to approve the tax levy, uh, ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen. In the amount of eighty-nine thousand.
Eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. We are seventeen dollars shy of having to have a public hearing. Just thought I'd let you all know. So, okay, no further comments, questions or discussion? We, we did have a motion. Yes, yes. Okay, roll call then. Mr. Dadley.
Hi.
Mr. Nivik.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so passed. Well.
Um, the second, I got the insurance rule, so this is just a point of information. It represents about a seven and a half percent increase, which is actually pretty good, uh, compared to a lot of the surrounding communities we, the treasures we've got together and, uh, they're all about eight to twelve percent. So, uh, I'm gonna meet with the, uh, the insurance agent tomorrow and, uh, the kind of go over it. And, uh, the police furnace has been installed and I understand it's warm.
Yes, it is.
Glad here it works.
The only, uh, brand I have is the, uh, uh, group service contract that would wait.
Okay, got that on your own business?
Yep.
All right. Okay, that's it. Thank you, Gene. Uh, comments from the public, Mr. English.
Evening, everyone. Uh, I again am representing in the Service Club. Uh, I don't know if everybody's aware, but next year is the village's sixty-fifth anniversary, birthday. And the Service Club had rented out the Blue Root Restaurant in Dundee on that day, Saturday, April twenty-ninth for community dinner. Uh, individual tickets would be sixty dollars per person or a hundred and fifteen for a family, or not family, sorry, for a couple. And I do have the menu for the night as well as the date, so I'm aware you can keep it open. And, and join us. It will be open to anybody in the village. And once again, the members of the board first notice. And there will be entertainment as well. Uh, I believe his name was Vito and Zito. I don't know if anybody's familiar with them, but he was highly recommended by the Blue Root. And, um, the time on there, it's six thirty and I don't remember if we had a end. But, um,
We can have some time come up?
We can take up to a hundred and twenty-five people right now and there is possibility of increasing that number if we get a good turnout, which we hope we will. So that was what I wanted to let you guys know.
Okay. This is the twenty-ninth of May or April?
April.
Is it after Saturday?
It's a Saturday, yeah. I know, they, they're really being really helpful, closing down the restaurant just for us. Wow, yeah.
Okay. You said it was sixty-five or?
Sixty for individual and one fifteen for, uh, a couple.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. English? If not, we'll move on. Thank you, sir. Okay, roads and parks, Mr. Harney.
Uh, normally I meet with Kyle ahead of time. Uh, but I can't with this stupid virus, so I'll put him on the spot and I have nothing new to report unless Kyle does.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Those reports are.
Well, I'm, okay, thank you, Ed, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, finance, George.
Uh, no, uh, Eugene, you, you say you're gonna bring up the group contract on your own business? Yeah, I just got one or two things under that that is what I'm bringing up. That's it.
All right, thank you, George. Uh, water and sewer, Mr. Nivik.
Uh, Mr. President, no report.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, police and public safety, we've already seen Mr. Antley unless you've got anything else to add.
Uh, just one thing, I just want to thank the chief for his efforts and ongoing training of our officers. I mean, I think you saw that tonight. It shows in the quality of people we're attracting and what they do for our village. So just, uh, you know, kudos to the chief and to the department for everything they do.
Thank you. Okay, Steve, uh, building and environment. Mr. Thor.
Uh, no report.
Thank you, Mark. And that brings us to building and zoning, building code update. Mr. Detmer is here on behalf of Mr. Perrineau this evening.
Mr. Perrineau, that's Arizona. So anyway, um, just wanted to let you folks know that I'm getting close to the finishing of the building code, ordinance. Be comparative that we move forward with this before all of the changes that are potentially, uh, coming into the village. With development are on board because we're way back on the two thousand three, um, codes in the two thousand two national electrical code. And that's one of the reasons that I wanted to talk to you this evening is currently in residential, it only, it says everything is being kind of it, which was theoretically not an appropriate way of amending the code. Um, we've always, and when I've done ordinances before, try to keep the code as clean as possible, um, unless there's a safety situation. And, um, history, just to give you some idea, is my husband was sued over not allowing Romex. And he was in Rockford and they had to build two side-by-side houses, uh, one with conduit, one with Romex and, um, it was proven that it was just as safe to have Romex as conduit, like with anything, um, the installation, you can, you can strip a wire going through conduit and it can be just as hazardous as driving a nail through a Romex. And so I just want to make sure that you folks are on board because if we start amending products like Romex out, you're gonna be looking at at least fifty to twenty pages of amendments because it has to be done not only in residential code, building code and the national electrical code. And if it's challenged in court, we have to be able to utilize what training knowledge and expertise we have to say that a product that's recognized nationally can't use. And he was, that sewing that was done was on behalf of, uh, their trade. Because it was keeping Romex out of it and it was, it was that reason that that went and it was the building department and everything in City Rockford. So it was the code of the time, just to give you some background on that situation. So it would be my recommendation that we keep the national electrical code and therefore the residential code clean on that. The other thing that we'll be looking to amend is the handrail requirement. It's currently four and with aging populations and, um, issues physically challenged and everything, even sometimes two seems to be a lot without being able to grab onto a handrail. So, um, it'll be my recommendation that we go down to three, which is a more logical height. We've had codes that are at two and it, it gets really tough. Um, especially for decorative types here, it's coming out, um, trying to put a, a handrail in there. But when you, once you get to three risers, it, you really need to have it there. Um, so that'll be an amendment that you'll see, um, specifically in residential. There have been so many changes in the codes, two thousand three to the twenty-one codes that it would be almost impossible to go over everything. They've just gone through and adopted things that weren't available in two thousand three are now available. A biggest thing we'll see is a change in sprinklers, um, so that the family, catch single family, all have, we don't have that many lots left in the village that it'll be a major impact. Um, but it will, um, make the, especially townhomes when you don't have any control of what's going on next door, right across the wall. Um, it's, it's very important to have that because back in the fifties and sixties, it would take up to ten to fifteen minutes for each flash over. Now it's less than two minutes. So most people don't even realize that they have a fire before they hit flashover. And we have an extremely good fire department, but, um, that'll be another thing to try and save lives, um, and keep that in itself. Um, hopefully I'll have that for you so that it can be effective January one. Um, the only other thing I'd like to mention, um, if I may, Mr. President, is we had President Pickett and I, um, were able to have a meeting with the owner of one thousand one West Main Street. And in that conversation, I mentioned that when all pet, all pet wellness center was here, um, that the funds were never paid and approximately nine thousand dollars was owed to the village. And with the assistance of finance director Van, um, we were able to provide the owner with it and that has been paid in full. So just wanted to let you know that those money's up. Come back into the caucus, so. End of reports.
Made the offer and Mr. Detmer. There we went, excellent, wow. It was a total surprise.
And it doesn't bother?
That's a good buy. We know his address.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Detmer. Okay, next item is the whole business. The whole business, we've got the group service agreement, update and execution.
So, um, at the last board meeting, I was getting the authorization to negotiate with Root. Um, I put together the contract and I, uh, based on what the previous contract was and then I took a look at what their, um, exclusions and minor changes. It then is, and that was part of their RFP and I incorporated them into the contract. Um, sent it off to them and it was approved by their legal team. Um, Mark has made some, you know, very minor changes on it. Um, I didn't have the, to get into the packet for you, but that's why I printed it all out for you. And, uh, it's, uh, in red and, um, lined up with a lot of, but, uh, it's ready to go.
Well, I, I liked Root. Well, I, I liked Groot, I mean, I've never had a problem with him in the village, I mean, I think they're a great company. The only thing I, I would challenge on this is, uh, I had asked earlier, what were we doing for an increase? And it looks like it's five percent a year. And the contract's over seven years, that's a thirty-five percent increase in seven years. I mean, first off, I, I've never agreed to a seven-year contract in all my business dealings, never. I mean, I could see a five with a mutual agreement of rollover at five into another two years. Because going forward, we have automatic renewal every year unless they're given thirty days writing in beforehand, but, uh. You know, if, you know, I wasn't privy to it, I missed the last meeting, I couldn't have been here if I wanted to, you know, things going on, but, uh. I, I just really have a challenge with, uh, seven years, that to me is a long time and anything can happen in seven years. And from a business perspective and having done contracts for over thirty years, I would never sign, me personally. And our business would never sign a contract for over five years, we were prohibited from five years, mostly three. But if you go two additional years or five, I mean, seven years, if, anything could happen between now and then. I know they're a good company, like I said, I think the world of Groot. But I'm looking at this strictly from a business perspective, and to me, seven years is way too long at a five percent a year, thirty-five percent over seven years. Without any form of negotiation based on what I read in the contract, we're locked in, so that's just my opinion. I think, you know, I think there'd be some residents that would have some possible issues with that too. Not that they're, I, it, I think it's a good contract, but I just have challenges with the seven years.
We got a better rate at seven years if, um, if we went with a five-year contract then, um. Waste management probably had a slightly better contract.
But I think we're giving five with a rollover, automatic rollover to, if we never found anything wrong, then that would probably give them some reason to go forward with it. I don't see why they hesitate with that, but at least it gives us an out if we wanted it five years.
This kind of, well, like I said, if we did the five-year, then it would be a higher rate for each of the five years.
I don't know, I didn't see the, I didn't see the information, so I can't say yes or no to that.
Yeah, it, so the rate of, with the seven-year contract, if you put it at a, a better rate, be more comparable to what waste management was offering. However, what this waste management had was an escalator surcharge in there for diesel fuel. And that was the big unknown with waste management.
Before we continue, we have a motion.
Yeah, so moved.
Second, Nivick.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Nivick to approve the service agreement as presented with, uh, Groot. Okay, any further comments, questions, or discussion?
So, just, just for clarification, the current contract ends December thirty-first, correct? Correct. We're kind of under a time crunch here, is that correct, Eugene? I didn't hear you say again?
Yes, correct.
Thank yous. Thank you for getting this done so quickly, because I know that's a lot of work, cause I know in the past, we've taken six to eight months to try and negotiate these things and figure it out, so, so thank you for your time.
Yeah, and I know the last time we discussed with the waste management contract, the diesel fuel thing was a very big concern of mine, because let's face it, we don't know where diesel fuel is going here in the next. Five years or seven years, um, I, I can pretty much say it's always gonna go up, um, you know, so.
Transitioning to natural though. Too.
Yeah, I mean, we just.
I mean, look at all the ones out there that are natural now.
Right, so I had a conversation with waste management after we. Told them that, uh, we were going with Groot, they says that their, um, trucks are the compressed natural gas, however, they put the escalator block. Pause in there, because that was the only one that they could have a standard for, but they would be looking for a similar thing for natural gas. So what, whatever contract we had, they would want something that would allow them to have some further surcharge.
Where there was not that clause in the.
Well, that's kind of compelling.
Now, we, we, did you and Mr. President do it, both of you were involved with that?
With the?
Mr. President, you had a negotiation?
It was me.
Yes, okay.
So it was basically.
What's that?
I said, we went out with an RFP.
Yeah, so there was.
Yeah, I know the RFP went out.
So there really was no negotiation other than a fine-tuning the contract, just to ensure that they had what they wanted in the contract.
Yeah, I look at it different perspective from negotiating, that's all.
Yeah, this, this was not a negotiated price, they, this is the prices that they gave that they said that they would charge.
And that's, just for having been involved, what? Three pass garbage contracts, maybe four with the preview, with the last time I was on the board, it doesn't really seem like the companies negotiate price much, they just basically say go someplace else then. Um, and I will say that I believe Eugene, you negotiated in the, uh, um. Facilities for the Halloween at the Hollow for this contract that we did not have in the past.
Exactly, and, um, year one, twenty-twenty-three is actually lower than the current year.
I just saw that.
Yeah.
And then five after that for every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the only thing I have challenges with, and I can't agree with it. Going with seven years and thirty-five percent, that just to me is, you know, I, I, and again, I wasn't involved with that, had I been, it might have been different, but I mean, I, I can't say, uh. You know, just like I said, I just, that, that just, it goes against everything in my grain to go with a seven-year contract and a thirty-five percent increase.
The current contract had a three percent increase every year, um, the difference was we had a seven percent inflation rate. And we just ended on a bad year.
Yeah.
You know, if, if the inflation wasn't seven percent or eight percent, um, I think the, the results would have been different.
Yeah, and I'm sure they'll eventually. Tender off, I mean, it'll, it'll, it all is cyclical, so it's gonna eke one out, so we don't know what it's gonna be like five years from now, five years from now, we go into a recession, five years from now, it could be two percent. And we're paying five, that's all. So, okay, I won't hold it anymore. Think the vote, think you know my vote.
Okay, that's it, roll call, please. Mr. Hoffman.
Nay.
Uh, Mr. Nivick.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Dadley.
Aye.
More affirmative than one negative, the motion so carries, thank you, gentlemen.
It still was a good job though, Eugene, I'll give you credit for that, and I like Groot, but you know what I don't like?
Uh, Mr. President, I do have one quick question since we're still in our old business.
Sure.
This actually goes back to Eugene, it was actually, or whoever for the, under the warrants, I noticed under Ace Hardware, we had Zeigler's Hardware for keys. Do we know what those are for?
It was, yeah, Public Works, uh, Gas.
Okay, I, I just wanna, just to remind everybody, cause I believe Kyle, you know this issue too, is that we had issues with the getting, uh, keys made from. Low-cost keys for the village hall doors, and we had to keep on getting Elgin key to come in and. Uh, redo the door, doors, especially the police doors and the heavily used doors because of the multiple locks, so I just wanna remind everybody that, that. We were told just to use the able, the company keys from Elgin lock for at least those doors, so.
Yeah, he's a perfect master, master lock, bad lock.
The two, yeah, okay, just, I just wanna, I just saw that on there, so I just didn't want to have to go through again, cause we paid hundreds of dollars having Elgin lock and key come in to rekey all those doors all the time, but the. And that, they said that's typical for the poorly made keys, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joe. Uh, anything else in the business? If not, we move to new business. New business, we have resolution five forty-nine. Resolution five forty-nine supersedes resolution five forty-eight. Resolution five forty-eight. And January second listed as a meeting date, January second is a Monday. January first, Sunday, is New Year's Day. It's a holiday. The feds are gonna take Monday, January second off. Was brought to our attention that.
You just voted earlier.
Okay, that, yeah, the village off.
The village off is gonna be closed now, I'm gonna say the village Board of Trustees doesn't have to meet that night. Because there's not gonna be anybody here to have the heat on. Village Presidents might be back in town. Depending upon what the weather looks like. So, uh, yes, that's the main change from resolution five forty-eight to five forty-nine. Is noting that we will move the Board of Trustee meeting from Monday, January second to Tuesday, January third. So. If we could have a motion to approve resolution five forty-nine.
I move to, uh, resolution five forty-nine.
Second, Diatley.
Moved by Thor, signed up by Diatley to approve resolution five thirty-nine, establishing the dates for the Board of Trustee meetings. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Nivick.
Aye.
Mr. Dadley.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes, thank you, one and all. Any other new business to come before the board?
President Pickett, um, is it all right if I, I forgot something in the public comments, if I could quickly say something, do I have to, or they're not allowed?
I'll let you.
Okay, um, but as we celebrate the sixty-fifth anniversary.
Oh, man.
Oh, man.
Um, we would also like to recognize some of the village's long-term residents. And I didn't know if the village had any way of identifying longevity of resonating the village, they can help us out to try to recognize those people.
Maybe the water bills.
We know that, we'd have been making notes every time we had public comments, people get us and tell us how long they've been here.
Sixty-three years.
See, that's how we get it. Put that down next to his name.
And you can check.
Well, we also have residents that moved from one house to another house in the village too for the water bills, so that's just something to consider.
It's gonna be like finding the oldest tree in the village.
It is.
Right, we'll keep training them. I don't, cause I don't know any way.
Chief, everybody, you can throw out the spring newsletter. Yeah, bring it on the spring newsletter and let people identify themselves or their neighbors.
Yeah.
And.
Well, depends on what prices might be, you know, I mean. We might have been cheap, you know, they might have also been here.
But once you get a, uh. Verbal list, then you can check. Yeah, then you can check the recorders, you can check the water billing, you can check the vehicle light, there'll be some checkpoints. They, but just otherwise, they're shooting it dark, you know, okay.
Absolutely, yeah, sorry, can't help you on that, because if I'd known, I'd have been making notes on these people.
You get a. You're like, yeah, starting.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many years are you looking for, just out of curiosity?
Uh, can I get to be forty to fifty?
Be quite a few in there.
Yeah.
Okay, look, anything else, Mr.?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you, George.
Uh, I move that we adjourn.
Second, Harney.
Roll call. Boy, did I miss that one?
Man.
Uh, uh, Mr. Nivick.
Aye.
Mr. Atley.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, we are adjourned, thank you, one and all.